All right, I'll call the order, the City Hall Ad Hoc Committee Meeting. It is Tuesday, November tenth, four oh four P M. With us, myself, Adam Yoder Chair, Councilwoman Liz Mealy, Councilman Vince Pelisi, Council Members of the Committee, additional members of Council are President Randy Allison, Bonnie Katz, as well from the Administration, we have Mayor Slaughter, welcome. Joe Girardi from Code, John Sanders, City Engineer, Chief Mark Killian, Assistant Chief Kalender, I'm gonna mess up your name, Chief, I'm sorry, Chief C. We're gonna go with Chief C. Joe Pavla from Finance and Chris Cooley from I T, I think that's everybody. So we'll work through the agenda, first thing on the agenda is a presentation, discussion of Trade and Transit One to Public Safety Preliminary Plan. So Joe Girardi and John Sanders, I believe, took a lot of what we were talking about, I think, the past couple of meetings, and put it on a drawing, so I wanted to give them a chance to review that and present that to the Committee. And we could get some any kind of answers, questions, maybe clarity on some additional thoughts on that option from the Administration. So I'll turn it over to you, Joe.
Uh, yeah, I think I'd start.
If you want to show that PDF and share that PDF for all of us, that'd be fantastic. Excellent.
Okay, super.
Floor's yours, Joe.
All right, thank you. Um, what I did was, and again, this was in conjunction with John Sanders, Chief Killian, the Mayor, also Chief Hagan, concerning spaces and size. So what I did was I took all the studies we've had done in the past from Tony Visco showing all the size square footage, what we have at City Hall. The one that was done by Kimball, so I have like five or six studies I threw together on this. The Public Safety Building is something that Chief Hagan and I've been working on for a while, and Chief can verify that. We've been involved with EMS, the Coroner, the Coroner, I'm sorry. Also with the Fire Department and the Police Department putting together a building. Well, that's what you have, you have ten sheets of drawings. The first sheet is basically where all your square footages are, okay? You have City Hall labeled three different times, each department's broke down, you have three categories. You have actual, which we actually have presently right now in City Hall, that's all the space we use in City Hall. The needed space, the second column is what we looked at as a group, came up with some of the spaces. And again, if you've been in long, you've been in council long enough, you've been in our building, there is a lot of wasted space in our building that we put spaces because it was a space that was there existing, okay? And then the last column, column is what's provided, okay? That's actually what I can fit in, we can fit in over at Trade and Transit One. If you look at the square footage column, available spaces on the first, second, and third floor. Basically, the way we're looking at this as an administration, all the administration would move over to Trade and Transit One, except for the Police Department, okay? By doing that, if you want to go back to the next sheet, which is A two, Chris? A two shows exactly what's there on the third floor presently right now, and it's very, very little space that's actually being used by someone. Okay, so I took the existing plans, which I got from John, got some of the square footages with John, went through and picked out from Trade and Transit One. And if you go to the next sheet, which is A three, that shows you what we can fit in, all the dark shaded in areas would be the new construction, everything else is existing. So you're looking at the area where you see Codes on the left-hand side and the Codes Clerk. Above that would be the Mayor and so forth, and then to the right of that is the I T, City Clerk, Finance. We have two vacant spots, we have a break room and the controller on this floor, okay? Pretty self-explanatory, you come up the main stair tower, or you come up the elevator to a lobby, we take out that existing wall that's there with the doors. We have an individual standing there saying, okay, who do you have, what, or sitting there, I'm sorry. Who's your appointment with and so forth, I let them through the door, and they go to three different areas, which is the busiest, be the City Clerk, the Mayor's Department, or the Codes Department, we get the most traffic, so that's the three areas you go to, okay? As far as cost and stuff, I believe, Mr. Yoder, you're gonna talk about that later, if I'm correct?
Yeah, we can, you and I had chatted about that on the phone, we can go through that at that time, that's fine.
Yeah, that's my thought, okay? And then we have two vacant spots down below, I know I talked to the Mayor, he's interested in possibly bringing over, I believe, the Fire Chief Mayor, and maybe the clerk over here, I'm pretty sure you're talking about, so we have space available here on the third floor. That would cover all of us, the Administration, the Treasurer's Office would be down on the first floor where the old restaurant used to be out front, okay? I do not have that drawn up, but it will fit in there based on the square footage that I got from the drawing. Okay, so that would solve the Administration's needs as far as ADA accessibility and so forth, which reason why we got this all committed together was for that particular reason, trying to find a way to make it so we're ADA accessible to the general public. If you go to the next sheet, that'd be the existing site plan of City Hall, how it is now, okay? And if you remember correctly, if you look, there's probably, you have the Winsport Police Department entrance in the back, the main entrance in the front and on the sides, and then there's also two side entrances for the Codes Department, okay? That's what we have laid out now, and also if you remember on the original plan from Kimball, the original ramp was out front with the decorative stone. It was a sixty-foot-long ramp, it's approximately six-foot in grade between our public sidewalk and that entrance coming in on the first floor, okay? So then what we did was the next drawing coming up is what proposed City Hall would be. Because the police are gonna have to remain here, the way we looked at this was, you start in twenty twenty-one, and if everything works out the way it should, and money's available, grants and so forth, what Chief Hagan's working on, we're looking at twenty thirty-one to have the public safety facility ready to go into, okay? Well, it's like a ten-year phase project, if I want to say, this would be the second phase of it, which would be the ramp. Now, what I did was, we extend our public sidewalk along West Street. Now, you make your corner, and you come up that same sixty-foot-long ramp that was out front, except for it's in the new main entrance to the Police Department, because we're only using the first floor of this building, we're not using any other floors, because everybody else is gone. So the public needs to get to the Police Department, they have their ADA accessible ramp in the rear, which, again, being that you want to try to blend this in, it's gonna be a lot cheaper, because the back of the building, if you remember, is yellow brick, and it's also drive-in finish, it's not that stone that's out front, okay? And we're only gonna add probably about, I don't have my measurement here, but I think you're probably only gonna add a forty-foot ramp or thirty-foot ramp, because we already have an existing ramp back there that is ADA accessible. The only problem with that existing ramp, you can't get to it from the public sidewalk, nor can you get to it from a handicap spot, okay? And then we took that parking that is along West Street out, we put in some green space, some trees landscaping on that side. Again, that helps us with our EMS, water infiltration, so forth, we're taking a hard surface and making it previous now. So then that would be what the renovation would do for City Hall, now, at this point, we have met all our ADA requirements. Our police is accessible to the general public in parking, and so is the Administration over Trade and Transit One, okay? The next two sheets are just elevations, okay, if you want to go to the next sheet, Chris? That's the elevation looking from West Street into the building, okay? And as you can see in the back of it, that's your three-tier ramp, okay? But nothing on that side, you'll see it all changes, it stays the same, except for the rear ramp, and then if you go up to the next screen, that is what the rear would look like, you have an existing ramp that's there now, then you have like the pochette section, which would be your new rotating wall and your ramps behind it, if you follow that dotted line, you go down, you go across flat West Street, okay? Then the next would be your Public Safety Building, okay? The next one would be a climate control lower-level garage for the Police, EMS, and Fire. They have twenty parking stalls available down there, there's also storage down there, and there's also forensics for the garage, in case they need to come in and look into a vehicle and find certain things. And again, I ran through this with the Chief, EMS, and the Fire, so we're all on board in the way this looks and the way it's laid out. Any architect you get's gonna design a building differently, I made a building very simple to make it functional and work for our needs, okay? So that's why we have it this way. Then you have two elevator shafts and two stair towers, so what you're gonna end up doing is you're gonna bring in somebody who's a somebody's being arrested for something, come into the garage, go into the elevator, and go up to the first floor. Chris, you want to show them the first floor? Okay, so they're gonna come in through the back, down at the bottom here, and you'll see where EMS is, it says number twenty, number twenty, there's a door there, okay? That's the elevator tower, so they're gonna come up, and this is basically the area down below where the police would be, their detectives are in there, evidence room, the lineup, all that, they have their weapon ammo storage or showers, EMS has enough space, they're involved in this also. We provided them space in here, we also have Fire Department on the upper part of the of the screen, that would be their office, and then our Codes Department would be on the left, because Public Safety deals with the three of us, okay? Plus, we have EMS, and if you can slide the screen down a little bit, Chris, I know there's the apparatus room. There's approximately total apparatus room, there's thirteen thousand square foot apparatus room. And I talked with Chief Killian, also the Assistant Chief, there's adequate room in there for our fire truck pumppers, our rescue vehicle, which is your riverboat, EMS has there, SWAT, the police are in there, so this will house our equipment, it freezes up at Reckert Avenue, freezes up on Walnut Street, freezes up EMS Center down there on the corner of Sheridan and Sherman, because they're now at this building, okay? And then, so that's three buildings that would be vacant, vacant from the city that we could sell, and at least recruit some revenue. And then the last picture I have is basically what would be the second floor. And again, we have a police area up there, we have the weight room, this is, a lot of this is shared, weight room shared by Fire, EMS, and the Police. We have break rooms downstairs that are shared with everybody. And then you have a large vacant area at this point, and that vacant area is about eleven thousand five hundred square feet. But we need to expand, if somebody else would want to jump on board, like the Coroner at this point, possibly may want to come back, because we originally, Chief, if I'm correct, we had the Coroner involved in this. So that's what we have, again, I think we all put our heads together, we thought out square footage-wise, there's adequate space in doing this. In the long run, I think this is probably from coming from the Administration, we feel this is probably the least expensive way to go with this, and it does fit our needs from now until, well, way after I retire. So, but that's my speech, and that's why I wanted to present to you, the Administration, if they have anything to add to that, or, you know, as we go along, if they have any questions of me or John, we're here to answer. Okay? Thank you. So that's our presentation, that's, like I said, something I think, maybe at the end of the meeting, we decide to look at it, you, everybody may want to take another month and come back and say, okay, this is the route we want to go, this is what we're gonna present to Council for our recommendation. And again, that comes from you three committee members from Council to decide which way you want to go. But I felt being on paper, again, I thought it's a little bit easier to read and understand, and you can see the spaces and how they fit, okay? So.
Okay, Vince, Liz, Bonnie, Randy, I have a handful of questions, but I wanted to offer you the chance to ask any questions that stuck out to you before diving into some of the numbers that we have together as well.
I have.
All right, go ahead. Sorry, go ahead.
Adam, but I'm gonna go in with the more able connection before I bring them up, okay? No, I said, I have some questions, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'll follow up after you.
That, I understood, so a couple of questions, Joe. So proposed twenty thirty-one, I mean, like, is this just like a general design? I mean, are there a couple of buildings that you guys have like thought about or have in mind for this? Or is this just like, hey, well, if this is a rough design, we could start with?
What it was, it was a rough design fitting on a certain lot of land, which I believe the Chief can speak better than I can, okay? But this building would fit on, there's three parcels of ground that this building would fit on, okay? And it's really in the center of Winsport, it's laid out to fit that need, it's laid out for landscaping and and, you know, so much, so much ground for how much building you have and so forth. So, yes, it's, but it is, like I said, any architect could take it, and he may design, he may want to use brick, he may want to use steel stud, or he may want to that kind of.
All right, yeah, um, this is just the city, no UPMC, no County?
At this point, the County was originally involved, go ahead, Chief.
EPMS is UPMC or Susquehanna EMS, so it's not just the city. We could also, in the open space on the second floor, have County grand jury space if they chose to be involved. My understanding is that, right now, they're looking to move the corner elsewhere, because they need to move quicker. And potentially the DUI Center as well, but, and Processing Center. But that doesn't mean that they aren't gonna be a part of it. The County Administrator still wanted to be involved, and wanted the County to be involved in the MOU the last time we met, and so they are going to remain a part, a partner in this effort for a Public Safety Building along with UPMC. UPMC's intention with regard to this project would be to, to provide land for it. And it was my original idea, given the open space out there and the fact that it was once known as a high-crime area, but is now being rebuilt beautifully out there, I thought it would be, if possible, if we could somehow luck out and be able to get a Police Department or government buildings in that area, it would be fantastic. And so, the initial concept was kind of a large building in the center of the rectangle between Campbell Green High and Park. Just theoretical idea only, these discussions began among City Administrators last year. It was my original idea, we started doing drawings and how we could have underground parking and multiple government units all in the same place. And, and then what happened was Joe, obviously Joe has a lot, Mr. Girardi has a lot more experience with drafting and building concepts and things like that than we do, and so what he did was, he, he gave a lot of his time, and I mean a lot of his time here, and has probably saved us a tremendous amount of money should we pursue any of these projects, whether it be renovations and going into other city property or the Public Safety Building, the initial concepts cost so much and take so much time, and Joe's done this on his own time, should be commended greatly for it, but what he did was explain to us that, that a large kind of, you know, castle-like building would not be very aesthetically pleasing, and so he drew up another plan for a Public Safety Building that had first floor on this side and second floor in the middle, and had a kind of an L shape, you drive in one way down below, and you come out another way, front and back door to a large apparatus bay with office space above the apparatus bay and things like that. His, his experience is clearly far beyond any of us, and he was able to lend that to these drawings and give us an idea of something that we couldn't even have imagined before that. And so, at this point, you know, the Public Safety Building is a dream for the future. But these other concepts with regard to Trade and Transit are more for here and now. And, and he lent his skill to that as well. And so, you know, when, when he showed us in the City Administration what he had done, we were all pretty excited and thought you would want to see it.
Now, very, very much so, and Mr. Girardi, thank you very much, I mean, it's, we've talked a lot about these different ideas and what have you, the past couple of meetings specifically, and it helps kind of put a visual to what we've been discussing, so, thank you very much. It's not an easy task, I would second that very much. Couple additional questions that I had, why do we, so I was of the impression going into this and through our discussions that for City Hall ADA compliance, we had to also look at the fire alarm system, the signage, and doorknobs as well. Why would we not have to do that in this scenario?
Okay, because what we're gonna end up doing is, in that particular, our City Hall presently as it is, the public area is only where the Police Department's at, okay? The building would not be used by anybody else anywhere else, so really, the only thing you would have to upgrade would be anything associated with that Police Department. So there are probably three alarms, four alarms in that area that have to be real, readjusted. If you look through that one brochure I gave you of all City Hall, certain things would have to be changed, but it's very minor, because we're no longer using anything but that first floor back to the door where Donna's at, okay? Once, once you go past Donna, everything else is vacant in the building. So the, on the original plan for City Hall, the security area would not need to be anymore, because it's no longer being used for the general public or anyone, actually. And the same thing is true with the elevator, we're not gonna use the elevator, because we're not using the second, third, or basement. Now, you may have to get into it for mechanical purposes, or, or go in to fix something, that's one thing. But as far as general use for the general public, those two things would not need to be taken care of at this point. And you are correct, it would be some minor A upgrades in the Police Department.
Okay. And I, I was of the impression the elevator was fine, it passed, it passed inspection, you know, the whole nine yards. I was of the impression there was nothing additional that we had to address with the elevator regardless.
I would say that, I would say this, I know the elevator is safe, it did pass its inspection for use for a year. Now, the ADA stuff, I would talk probably, Chris Cooley, if he's on, can probably answer that better than me, because I wasn't part of the study, but there were certain things with that elevator that need to be redone, because it doesn't meet ADA requirements. I believe I'm correct, Chris?
Yeah, you answered my question, you're good.
Yeah, the, I believe the, the actual controls in the elevator aren't up to current ADA specifications. The buttons.
So the heights of the buttons.
Right.
Heights of the buttons, and there's also not the brow pieces on them.
Was, Chris, there also something with the size of the shaft itself, or am I wrong on that?
No, the shaft and the doors were not going to change, they were, from what I was told by the engineers previously, they were compliant.
Okay.
Storage, because I know we have a ton of storage, and they're existing between Codes, everybody, I know the City Clerk's got a ton of records from Council, but have you, where's, where's storage going in this?
Yeah, I addressed that issue down on that lead sheet where you say City Hall. Basically, all the storage that you see with, with all the individual departments, that's inclusive of their storage they have presently in their room, okay? This down below where it says City Hall, other storage areas within the City Hall, there's several spots, okay? On the Treasurer, due to the size space that's there in the new building, Trade and Transit One, they can bring all their storage with them at that facility, okay? City Controller can do exactly the same thing, there's adequate space, those two rooms that they have are the size they are, okay? Sort of like City Hall, it's bigger than really what they need, but now they can bring their storage that they have into there. Codes, we have six hundred, I think it's six hundred square foot of storage, that is gonna remain at City Hall. We have our day-to-day yearly operation stuff that we keep in our offices now, okay? So that would stay at City Hall, we can make it so it's accessible on the first floor, use one of those vacant spots now that we have on the first floor, so no one has to go down that basement, okay? Then the remaining storage would be one thousand two hundred forty-five feet, square feet of storage around City Hall that they use in different areas, okay? If you go up above second floor, Trade and Transit One, there's like twenty-three hundred square feet, I haven't used any of it. So it's really that, if it's that much of a necessity for them to bring it, we have space, but I'm thinking, how many times I see certain individuals go to those spaces, it's not that many times in the year, because they're looking for back data. But there is space available if we had to move it.
Okay.
Hey, Adam, can I ask you a question on that?
Yeah, I was gonna say, I just saw you come off, and I'm guessing you're at better signal, so by all means, jump in here.
Yeah, well, I guess what I'm curious about specifically with the storage is this whole plan is confusing me a little bit, so we're planning to move City Government out of City Hall, but leave all of our materials there, as well as the police.
No, the only thing I'm leaving there is the police. All storage for Treasurer and City Controller, which is not in their office, will be moved to Trade and Transit One. There's only four individuals that would have storage, City Clerk, the Engineer, Community Development, and Finance, and that's a total of twelve hundred square feet, and that's all based off of Visco's drawing. So I'm saying you would have to provide twelve hundred square foot of space over at Trade and Transit One, which you could do on the second floor, it's available, okay? Or, again, that means every so often, somebody would have to walk back to City Hall and go get some information. That's, okay, but you do have the ability to put it there in Trade and Transit One if you wish.
I guess part of what I'm nervous about is, we're talking about not doing any of the upkeep work that we've been avoiding on City Hall for the last forty or fifty years, including roof work, right? Which means that City Hall will be deteriorating during the time when we are leaving all of our stored files and the police there. It seems to me like we need a, we need a plan that involves moving out of City Hall outright, if that's what we're looking to do, so that the building can be passed off to someone who can take care of it.
Okay, and I'm not disagreeing with you, what I'm saying to you is, right now, our building is functional, it works, it's not breaking down, it will have maintenance to do in the years to come, there's no doubt. I would say that we have the option of, if we wish, there's many different options, we could turn around and sell City Hall to someone next year, and go at least
I guess, I guess what I'm, what I'm saying is, of the issues that we've cited as issues in City Hall, we have a heating and air conditioning issue, that continues to be a problem if the cops stay there, correct? We have a roof issue, that too continues to be a problem if the police stay in City Hall, right? So the only issue that we're really avoiding is the, is a portion of the handicap accessibility issue, correct?
Well, no, my question to you is, you're saying there's a roof issue. Presently, right now, we may need a roof someday down the road, but I don't think our roof is leaking anywhere that's causing damage, a ton of damage, and I don't, I don't know, Adam's not here, but from my walking around the building, structurally, it sounds
That's fine, my understanding had been, my understanding, Joe, had been that we were looking at a couple of major expenditures on City Hall that we were going, that we were staring down in the next year or two, if we didn't figure out an, an option.
Yeah.
And, and one of those issues was HVAC, which we received quotes up to three million dollars, right? One of those issues was handicapped accessibility, which we can accomplish for something in the neighborhood of maybe a little better than a half a million, right? Depending on, on the, on the way we do accessibility. And then my understanding was that the other issue was the roof, if the roof's not a problem, then the roof's not a problem, whichever. But, but I guess what I'm saying is, the only portion of those expenditures that we are avoiding by moving them, if, if, if the police are staying in City Hall for at least the next ten years, is, is the handicapped accessibility portion, am I right?
If I'm correct, this committee was formed for the ADA requirements, and that's what we're trying to achieve here. I'm not disagreeing with you, that's why, but again, I go back to saying, any building you own, you're gonna have maintenance, whether the roof goes this year or ten years from now, it's gonna go. You want to plan for the future, yeah, I'm assuming that eventually we're gonna want to sell City Hall, I don't think we're gonna want to stay with it. We did the same thing you did with the YMCA, you sold it for a dollar, somebody was more interested to purchase it and rather than fix it, so
And, and I think, I think there's already interest in City Hall, I'm not disputing that. I guess my, my concern is that it sounds as though the plan that the Administration is outlining involves us not really moving out of City Hall. Consequently, you know what I mean, like, we're still leaving a whole bunch of City Hall storage there, and we're leaving an entire department there. And, and consequently, that means that we're still on the hook, maybe not for some of the ADA modifications, but for any of the rest of the upgrades the building might need in the next ten years, right? In addition to the cost and the, and the upgrades that might be needed on another building.
Liz, I would, I would second that, and if I accidentally cut you off, sorry.
No, 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 please, by all means.
Yeah, I, I would second that, and if, if you want, we can go through item number two, the, that cost matrix that I had put together, I mean, and, and
If I can walk right over you again, Adam, just real quick.
Please do.
It's not that I don't appreciate the thought and the work, and these, these, this is a line of thought I think we need to pursue. So I don't mean to seem like I'm attacking you, I'm sorry if I do, I, I'm just trying to understand what our larger plan is, so Adam, please, continue.
Yeah, no, I, I completely agree, I mean, you know, in, in looking at that option specifically, you know, this is, this is great, this really helps quantify, I think, what this Public Safety Building is, but, I mean, over ten years, we're still gonna be occupying City Hall to a degree. There's gonna be costs associated with staying in there, managing the building, keeping it online, to the point where, you know, we need to factor those into what that looks like as we make a decision, and I, I started to do that. If there's no other questions, we can start looking at that, and I can kind of, Liz, I think, kind of articulate some of your points that I think you're bringing up with that. Randy, you just popped on.
Yeah, I just have one, one question on the ten-year period. So if, if the administrative services all moved out except the police, we leave the Police Department there, the, but if the plan is to sell the building, then would we hand off those management responsibilities to the new owner? And I guess in that case, we'd have to lease that space.
Right.
Does there be quantification of that cost, and, you know, looking at it that way?
Right, and again, the public, if you do the first two phases of this project, which would be Trade and Transit One and the ramp for City Hall, okay? That gets us out of our ADA issue, it also gives us a fix for expansion if we need to grow and so forth in Trade and Transit One, and the police have a home, now, the problem with the Police Department and Chief Hagan, you can speak better than me, this is not laid out right for them, they don't have adequate space, they don't, so we need to do something with it. This is buying us some time until we can get funding This is buying us some time until we can get funding available for a public safety building. If we don't do that, okay, then we need to find about eleven thousand square foot of building somewhere for the police department or build them an eleven thousand square foot building and the police is taking care of it.
The, many references have been made over and over to ten years. That number was a very rough estimate added to this by Mr. Girardi recently. Um, the people that are involved in the public safety building, including the people from Penn Strategies do not believe that if, if, uh, the powers that be that would be involved in assisting us with that funding were in favor of doing that. They don't believe it would take that long. I think Joe was estimating ten years to be safe. None of us think that if a public safety building actually happened, that it would take anywhere near that. I think it would be much closer to three to five years probably at the most. Um, but we don't know because there are things in that project that we have never done and we need help with. So, um, the issue is really this with the police. Um, do we stay in city hall and only move once or do we move twice? Like the proposal here for everyone else. Um, that is entirely up to you, obviously. If, if there is someone who would be willing to buy city hall and then lease our space to us while they renovate the rest of it, then everyone would benefit from that while we attempt to put our, uh, public safety building package together. Um, but if not, then there would be something else that we would need to do. But the administration prior to today has talked about this many times up to and including with the mayor. And it was Mr. Girardi's idea initially, um, that we were one ramp away essentially in a few other small things from being able to leave the police department here, um, and then move everyone else and be compliant um, with the ADA and, and so, um, and also still be able to operate our government efficiently. So that's what we're all trying to do. Thank you.
I'm good.
Thanks, Randy. Um. Chris, if you want to bring up that spreadsheet that I sent out to everybody, we can go through that, Liz. I think that will kind of articulate, I think, what you were getting at. If it, and if it doesn't, let me know. Um, so I said this out to everybody, um, and I sent a PDF version out as well for whatever is easier for anybody to look at. Um, what this is, um, this is a, um, what I call a cost analysis worksheet. It's essentially a, um, a cash flow model. Um, to evaluate um, the true, um, present value cost today of staying in city hall with the present value cost of moving um, out of city hall, keeping police in the city hall in the interim and then going with the public safety building, whether it's three years, five years or ten years. Um, I, I, I think a lot of the costs that we've talked about, um, with, with city hall specifically, I think we all have a really good idea of what they are. I think we've all discussed they're pretty valid. Um, what you will notice on here from a cost perspective is they're, they're spread out. So from, from my work, um, going through city hall, looking at things, specifically the HVAC system, there's not, in my opinion, as much upfront cost to get that building to where it needs to be as what we had initially anticipated. A lot of the infrastructure for the HVAC side on the air side is in pretty good shape actually. And we can get a number of years out of that yet. So we could plan around that and stagger that out over the next five to ten years and slowly tackle that. There's a few that we would want to tackle. Um, initially that could be addressed. The bigger thing is the control system. Um, that is something that would be, in my opinion, something that we will want to make an investment in sooner than later because that will actually go as far to address a lot of the temperature issues that we have talked about in the committee that we've heard about for years. Um, the, the ADA, um, investments, uh, that are needed between the, um, uh, whether it's a wheelchair lift, a ramp, fire alarm, sprinkler systems, door hardware, elevator, they're all in here. Um, we could phase them, I would think, um, with obviously the ramp being one of the initial things we would want to do. Um, we could plan around that, whatever those, whatever would work for the group. Um, a couple of things in my mind that I think are beneficial in looking at both staying in city hall as well as moving are some of the efficiencies that could be gained by doing either of these projects. So if we make investments in city hall, obviously, um, we will make the environment much more, um, friendly or tolerable to work in the temperature control, what have you. So we'll get more productivity out of people. That's what the environmental efficiencies are. Um, and I'm simply saying, out of any given day, we're going to get about fifteen more minutes of productivity out of people out of an eight hour day, which I don't think is out of the realm of, of possibility. It's like three percent efficiency gain or what have you, um, for quantification sake. Um, there's a little bit of energy savings by making investments in those. Uh, we could potentially get some energy rebates. Um, those are based off of my experience in the industry. Um, a couple of things that I don't know that we should look at and Joe, maybe this is something that you could validate now if we actually may be able to get this. For either of these options, are there insurance savings that we could get by making updates to either city hall or moving out of city hall with areas or what have you? It's something that came across my mind. Um, and then the other thing, um, that we've talked about a couple of times is what kind of grant opportunities are out there for either of these projects? Um, there's got to be either some kind of historic preservation funding. Uh, maybe there's just general state grant funding that we could get, RACP grants, what have you, um, related to either of these. And those very much, in my opinion, would influence, um, a decision either way. I mean, it's, it's all taxpayer money. I understand that. But, um, whenever it comes, whenever we're talking about how much money comes out of the city coffers, it definitely impacts that. So, um, give me a second here. So, um, if you scroll down a little bit, Joe, uh, Chris. Um, speaking of the maintenance costs, so, um, doing these updates, whether it's city hall or, um, trade transit one or two, public safety building, um, there's going to be maintenance costs that we're not currently doing that we are going to need to do. Um, in talking with, um, some of the facilities personnel, the public works personnel, we are maintaining the HVAC system as it is. Like I mentioned, the, the, the temperature control issues are just that. They're not a maintenance issue from what I can tell. Um, they're outdated technology. However, doing the updates in city hall with the fire alarm, security system, um, that type of stuff, um, putting a new control system in it is going to add maintenance and it's a, you're looking at about eleven to twelve thousand dollars in year one, once those updates are done. Um, they'll jump up a, a, again, as you, on a year to year basis, as you would add to them. Um, so those are some of the maintenance costs that we need to make sure that we're capturing for sure. Um, uh, rent, I know we pay rent, um, into the city hall fund. That's something we could look at putting on here. Any ongoing technology updates mainly from an IT perspective. I don't know if there is something that we need to capture there, but in essence, when you bring all this together, um, positive cash flows, negative cash flows as far as costs go. Realistically, you're looking at just under three million dollars, I think, in present value cash flows over a thirty year life cycle of what it actually will cost us to get city hall to where we want it to be. Um, if you scroll down, Chris, to option two, um, very similar approach. Um, the, the difference here is to Joe Girardi's point and to Chief Hagan's point, um, there are less investments in city hall, um, because of be, having less people in there. Um, so Joe, to your point, I, I have some of the costs related to the additional ADA components in there. Um, you know, we may not necessarily need to do that. I would argue there are probably a handful of other things that we would need to do. So it may be less than what, four, five, six, seven, less than a million dollars or so, but, um, there would be some in there. The, the big, the big difference here, as you'll see, is there's moving expenses from trade and transit one or two. Um, there's modifications that Joe had mentioned in the, um, that Joe had mentioned in reviewing the plans, they're each about a hundred thousand dollars between a hundred thousand dollars moving expenses, a hundred thousand dollars renovations to trade and transit one or two. The, the big, the big numbers and the big ticket items are that public safety building. Um, I have it in there as around, doing that in around three years. Um, it could be five years, it could be ten. We, I understand we don't know that, but, um, Joe, from talking to you, um, a building of that size that, um, with, 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 with those items in there, you're looking at ten to fifteen million dollars.
Yep.
Right? From my experience in the construction industry, I think that makes sense.
That's a fair, that's a fair number, no doubt.
Yep, with your experience, um, over thirty plus years, I think it makes a lot of sense. And, um, that's procuring me, that's procuring it fitting out and what have you. Um, we may not need the five hundred thousand of, of building modifications, but there's moving expenses associated with that. Um, there's operational losses, um, that's inefficiencies in the transition of moving, having things in multiple different places um, that I think we need to account for and that's a similar process as, um, what I did and just kind of quantifying, making us more, a little bit more efficient. Um, to your point, we can potentially sell city hall, the fire department. What was the third building you had mentioned, Joe?
Um, there's three. Reckord Avenue has what? Fire Department, Vollet Street. And again, O E M S would be in the public safety facility. So then we could actually sell the property down on the corner, shared insurance.
So the other would be the second fire department.
Occupies three buildings over there.
Okay.
It would be consolidating their operations from their three buildings to ours.
So, um, so a, a, and obviously, you know, we would need, when, when it looks to maintenance costs, rent, um, ongoing technology updates, specifically with the public safety building, we're not really going to, we could probably get a, a rough order of adding to based off the square footage that you had. So, um, I can come up with something, um, from industry experience. That's fine. But, you know, with, with a few things hanging out there, um, just for more conversations, Joe. I mean, you're looking at over a thirty year period, you're looking at a, a, a present value of cost of twelve million and change. Um, so there's a, you know, between the options, um, there, there's a, there's a solid ten million dollar swing of, of, of cost of, of present, present value of, of, um, of money for the city coffers. Now, neither of these, like I had mentioned, reflects any kind of grant opportunities that are out there, whether it's for city hall, whether it's for moving government, whether it's for a public safety building. I think that's something that we need to figure out what may be out there sooner than later, certainly. That would impact this. Um, Liz, to your point, um, over the short term of staying in city hall, obviously, there's the ramp installation that Joe highlighted, but there are additional things that we probably will need to do. Even on that first floor where the police are, some minor HVAC improvements, some um, safe life, safety improvements, like with the fire alarm system, what have you, um, even some minor control system improvements to make it more efficient to operate. Um, those are things we need to factor in here as well. Um, and they, they add to the, the net cost to the city. They absolutely do. Um, so i- in, in going over this, I mean, if there's any questions on rationale or what have you, um, please, please let me know. But in, in trying to jump between and identify from a cost perspective, where might we be at? This is how I've been thinking of it, um, and this is how I think i- is a good way to tackle that. Um, both from a revenue and a, a city copper cost perspective.
My, my question, Mr. Yoder, to you is, um, like I said, we always have the capital budget and you always have, we have the big wish list we do every year. You know, things we want to do. Um, if, if the public safety number was taken out of this equation and it was just the two, the ramps and so forth for city hall and the renovations, train, transit one compared to the renovation prices of city hall, is there a big difference in the numbers too? Because I realize the public safety building here is going to be, puts this way past the renovations that we have.
Sure.
Truly understand. I didn't know what the two numbers were. You know, city hall, three, four million is the renovations that we're talking about. Is that like two hundred fifty thousand? You know, those are the numbers I was kind of interested in the comparison of those two.
I, I think.
Something we definitely need to do now, one of those things. Either renovate city hall or do the move, one of the two. That's something we have to do because of what we're going through right now at the ADA.
Yeah, Le- Lizzy, we're going to say something.
I mean, it sounds to me from, from looking at Adam's numbers and talking about it further, like we're looking at probably at least, you know, at least a million into city hall, whether we stay or whether we go, because we need to deal with some HVAC issues and we need to deal with. Um, you, you know, so, so we're spending a decent amount of money on city hall, whether, whether we stay or, or we leave. Um, uh, you know, especially assuming the police department is staying. Um, and we don't know what timeframe it is. You know, I, I think we need to be realistic. And if, if we don't have a regional partnership with the public safety building, it may be more difficult for us to get funding and to get it quickly. Obviously, we don't know until we try, but I, you know, I think, you know, um, a, and, you know, likewise, the it's going to make the building less appealing in terms of a sale or even a gifting of the building, more or less. You know, a one dollar number or something. If, uh, if we have, um, you know, if we plan to have the police in the base, in the, in the bottom of the building for, you know, um, the next ten years, you know, um, which means the reuse of the structure becomes difficult, which means, right, that all the money that's going into the building is ours until the police relocate. Um, uh, if, if we could negotiate some sort of a transfer of the structure, then obviously the upkeep on the building is no longer our responsibility. But, but we can't until we've, we've actually emptied the building. Um, A- Adam, one of the two things I was going to say otherwise is it seems to me that this discussion might actually benefit from maybe an in-person meeting. Does that sound totally crazy? Realizing we haven't been doing.
Not at all.
Um, I, I was going to suggest that maybe we should look at having the December meeting at trade and transit two and socially distant, um, only because I, I feel as though to a certain extent, uh, we're, the, the concepts here are big enough that we're having a hard time communicating them to one another in this format. Um, and, uh, and that maybe if we could actually kind of look at each other, we, we could, we could, um, understand what we were, what, what each of us was talking about a little better. Because I, I feel like I might be missing some of the finer points of Joe's plan. And I, I, I feel like I'm not communicating what, what I'm trying to get across about my, my financing concerns, um, in this.
No, I, I totally agree with you. I understand completely. Um, I mean, what we're trying to do here as a committee is come up with the, the best solution to the problem and to keep us the most inexpensive way for the taxpayer. That's what we're trying to do here.
Yeah, yeah, right. So, so that's, you know, um, and I, and I know that everybody's kind of like, at, at this point in the discussion, a- all of us has sort of picked sides. And pretty much everybody's picked the side that pick, picked the, the opposite side for me, which is I, I still kind of think maybe we should stick with city hall, but I'm willing to consider other options. But, um, but.
And I, I totally understand that.
We, I think we've gotten some emotional investment in one concept or another and, and my fear is that we need to make a decision predicated primarily on financials, it also bearing in mind, of course, just the, you know, the, the look that we want to see as a city hall, how we want to present ourselves as a city, all that stuff. But, but most of that, let's be frank, is secondary to the financial concerns. Um, so, uh, yeah, any, anyway, that's it. I guess I, I feel like we might be able to talk ourselves in circles a bit on this issue moving forward. If we, if we don't have a person meeting, um, to sort of hash it out. Um, and, and once again, I think that we are also making a little bit the, um, the case that, that I've been trying, trying to make of maybe at this point, we should try to bring in, try to find a, you know, a small amount of funding for some sort of consultant to whom we feed all of this information that we have put together and we say, um, help us see what it looks like to move. Um, help us see what grant opportunities there are for the police and there are potentially for moving or ADA accessibility or historic structure work, um, you know, and, um, and then, uh, you know, a couple of months from now, we have the results of that and we, and we, we make a decision. We, we make it in a day and, and that's what we're doing and that's all there is to it. Whatever, you know what I mean? If, you know, there's, there's no looking back.
Randy, you were going to say something.
Yeah, and I have to go in a, a couple of minutes, but, um, um, to the point of, uh, going around, it, it, from the beginning of looking at our problems in city hall, um, we've kind of done a one eighty because at first, um, we, we were pretty set on staying in city hall and fixing it up. But looking for a public safety option to get the police out and everybody else stay there. And, and that was the first plan. Um, and, and we moved on in that area until we ran into estimates and problems and the, the. estimates and problems and the bids and all that for the current city hall. Now it's is, it seems to have flipped and it's the other, it's the city administration leaving and the police staying for a certain amount of time. So I, I really think, I, I think it's, it is, uh, just one second, Liz's idea, and then I think you think it's a good idea too, Adam. That, that we meet in person or the committee meet in person and, and have the ability to kind of put things in place and in some kind of prioritized order. And, and get a better sense of it from that perspective. So thank you. That's all.
Yeah, no, thanks. Thanks, Randy. Uh, chief, you were going to say something.
Yes, thank you, sir. Uh, just a couple of things. One, on the repair side. I apologize, I was in another meeting, came in this meeting a little late. But I haven't heard anything in prior meetings about the concrete walls taking on large amounts of water. We've had significant repairs because of that. I do not know if it's just the drains or the roof or both. But that has plagued uh, the streets and parks department for years and I'm sure Mr. Yoder, they probably made you aware of that, but that's an issue here in this building. One of the things I just wanted to impress upon you, I may have said this before. But in nineteen seventy, and obviously the bottom line is money. Ms. Mealy is right, but in nineteen seventy, when they needed a new courthouse, they built one. In nineteen seventy-six, when they needed a new federal building, they built one. But in nineteen seventy-nine, when we needed a new city hall. We essentially, with all due respect, got a hand me down and we had to force fit ourself into it. I've been a cop quite a while and this is one of the only police departments I've ever seen, ever. Where you have to walk through the middle of the police department to access the rest of city hall. Or that you're even able to do that, and that should not be it. But it was for most of my career until they built the doors and then, of course, we had to reopen them again because of ADA compliance. So essentially, we have to we have to whisper in our own police department about our cases for fear of who's walking down the hall. We don't fit in here because it wasn't built for a police station. And a decision, I fear, a thirty or forty or fifty year decision involving us staying in this building would be the same as it was before. And so I understand that finances are a main issue. We're prepared to do what we need to do to learn about grant opportunities, sir, and all the, all of the other things with the assistance of PIN Strategies and, and whoever else we might uh, employ in, in that way in the future. I believe in talking to them that it's possible. I don't know how long it'll take. And I don't know where we'll end up, and we're certainly not opposed to the idea of moving out of city hall, hall ourselves. If another place became available to us that we could fit in until such time as we could get a public safety building. And if a public safety building became impossible, just downright impossible. Then maybe another place would be better for us as well. There are all sorts of options. We aspire to the highest of those options at this point. But my concern primarily is the layout of this building. You can get right off on the third floor and you're at the mayor's office. There's absolutely no security whatsoever. It wasn't, it was built in the eighteen hundreds for a different time, and I don't know if there's any amount of money that will change the security issues with this building, how close it is to the street, the location of the executive offices and so forth and so on. So. I would direct you to the homeland security review of it. If you haven't read it yet and, and ask you to take that into consideration and thank you for your time. Thank you.
Yeah, understood, chief. I, I think we all aspire to those things, but as, as Liz has had mentioned before, and I a hundred percent agree with this. It all comes down to money, um, and unfortunately, um, the city of Williamsport and other third class cities in the state of Pennsylvania play by different rules and the rules may or may not be fair, but we have to play by them. Um, and they constrain us from a financial perspective, so we, we have to play within it and we're in the situation we're in because of a lot of poor decisions thirty, forty, fifty years from now. We're not going to clean up all those decisions by this, but unfortunately, it's a really crappy place to start, but it's where we have to start, so. But, um.
And, and Adam, if I, if I can chime in, chief, to your point, uh, chief, to your, to your points, I don't think that any of this also, any of the discussion is, is preventing or, or you know, setting aside the concept of a public safety building at some point. I think the debate is merely if the public safety building lies in the future, then is it just as expensive or perhaps cheaper for us to stay in city hall with the police department and then eventually the police department finds a new home? And that becomes area for the rest of, you know, surface area for the rest of, of the city services to expand. You know, um, we, we, we utilize the remainder of the building for city administration and the police department moves elsewhere, you know, I, uh. So none of this is, is saying that we think that, because I, I would agree with you that I don't think that the city hall is an ideal location for the police department above all. Um, I actually see it a- a- as, as far as administrative offices go, it doesn't strike me as, as being, um, uh, uh, it strikes me as being a relatively fitting building, given the city's history, but, um, but it's not a great fit for the cops. But we know that we are a ways away from being able to afford a public safety building. So that's not the debate that we're having right now. Uh, you know, and that's, I, I think that's kind of the issue. Um, and then, you know, as far as the security of city hall goes, um, I agree that we could do better. I think we actually have had a plan, um, that we were looking at last year that, that would enable us to do, to, to secure city hall. A little better, but once again, right, it, all of that is only worthwhile if we know that we're staying. So, um, so. Yeah, okay, I'm probably beating a dead horse at this point. Thanks.
No, no worries. Um. So. Yeah, let's, let's meet in person, trade and transit two. Our next meeting is, let me look, let me just double check and then we can, uh, we can adjourn this if there's nothing else. For the good of the order. It should be December eighth. So, um. Janice, advertising?
Yep.
So, you want, do we want to advertise that like this week?
Yeah, I'll have to get that in.
Okay, yeah, so December eighth, four PM, trade and transit two. Janice, do you mind reaching out to Mr. Winder or would you like me to as far as reserving that?
No, I can.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, so we'll meet in person, December eighth, four PM. I think the mayor left. I think if there's one, if there's one key deliverable or just something we can make progress on, I think it would be rant funding. If, if that's possible. So, uh, Chief Hagan, if you'd be so kind as to relay that, relay that to the mayor. For both city hall, for most renovating, staying in city hall, for moving, for the public safety building, uh, there's kind of three pieces there that we're bouncing back and forth on. I think that would be very, very helpful. I will make a point, um, Joe Pavlock.
Would you like PIN Strategies at that meeting, sir?
Sure. I don't think that would be a bad idea at all. If, if PIN Strategies is the consultant that is, um, going to work on this for the administration for us. It would be good to have them there if they're available.
Okay.
Perfect. And what I'll do, I will work on updating that cost matrix, whatever. Try to make some of those yellow items less yellow. Those were areas where, you know, they're kind of swag, like sophisticated wild guesses, so to speak.